Thank you so much. Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, December 5th Committee of the Whole Meeting for Planning and Public Works. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Carson, Councilmember Kritzcher, Councilmember Forsyth is online, and myself, Councilmember Stewart. I will announce other council members as they arrive. We have just four items on our agenda tonight, and we're going to start with Public Works. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the final contract with RAS Construction in the amount of $2,963,304 and accept construction for the Northeast Street Stormwater Treatment retrofit project. Introducing the item for the consideration of the consent agenda on January 16th is Director Burt.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you for this opportunity to be here. This is actually a really exciting project for us in Public Works. One, because it came in under budget, and two, it adds a very critical component for regional stormwater treatment into our overlake area. And what I'd like to do here real quick is share some photos for you up on the screen there. Let me get this started here in a second.
Wonderful. And while Director Burt pulls that up, Councilmember Anderson has joined us in chambers. Welcome.
One of the things council had asked when we bring a project forward for acceptance, we talk about the successes and a little bit of a celebration. This is one of those projects. Originally, council awarded this contract back in July of 2021. This project was the second phase of the Northeast 40th Street Stormwater Trunk Extension to Lake Sammamish. It was mostly funded from outside sources, Washington Department Ecology, the Microsoft Community Facilities District, and also money from King County. The overall purpose was to construct a stormwater runoff water quality treatment facility to provide enhanced treatment, phosphorus control, and oil control for the areas near State Route 520 and Northeast 40th that drain to the trunk extension that go down near Lakes Sammamish, and it generally improves water quality throughout the basin. As you can see, it's not a standard water quality treatment facility. There is an aspect of design and art that was put into this. It was the first type of system where we were using a thing called a Filterra bioscape for the water quality treatment and the stormwater pump station in there. So essentially, based on the picture is that water comes into the facility, it flows down that central trough, it parcels out, filters through the material within the bioscape, and then moves into our regular trunk lines to take it out for further treatment there with King County. The project did start in October 2021, and we finished in April of '23. We had a bit of a challenge with the contractor due to some personnel issues that delayed the completion of the project. But as mentioned, the project came in under budget, and it's actually going to help us going further, setting the standard for this type of project and looking to do further water treatment facilities like this going forward. So pending your questions, happy to answer anything you may have.
Well, thank you so much, Director Burt, and for the chance to celebrate this fantastic collaboration. I will say for the record that we have three members of the Board of Supervisors for the Community Facilities District here on our council, and we had an opportunity to see this system in action recently, and it was absolutely a thrill. So we are considering this item for consent on January the 16th, correct? Wonderful. And are there questions from the council? Councilmember Kritzcher.
Just a comment, and I would say, I think, as Councilmember Stewart indicated, I would see this as both in terms of the Community Facilities District as a City of Redmond source as well, since it's co-governed between Microsoft and the City of Redmond, and is one of our unique things that we have in our city that no other city has to be able to support public-private partnerships. So this is one of those great examples. And I'll just say that I would encourage everyone to check out this spot. It's really beautiful. When we were there, looking at it, the water started to flow through. It was empty, and it just suddenly started to flow, and it was really beautiful to watch it go through and to think about all the runoff that was coming from the highway getting cleaned, and that we were making a real difference for our waterways here in Redmond. So I'm super excited about this project and excited to accept it.
It's definitely getting worked right now with the rain.
Yeah, it's keeping busy today for sure. Councilmember Carson.
Well, thank you. And so as also a member of the CFD, I actually got to see this when they were partly through the build, where they just had the spines out there and none of the fill material. And it's pretty ingenious, because obviously, we've had a lot of rain recently. It has an overflow where, you know, if it can't handle it. But the beauty is that the vegetation gets the benefit of, you know, the moisture first, and it obviously does have a cleaning effect and filtering effect, which is pretty clever, I think is the best way to put it. And I think it's a cool thing to check out if you get a chance. It's right on the corner of 156th and 40th, so right there by Microsoft. So anyway, yeah, I'm thrilled that we're doing this and have done this, and that it's done, and that it came in under budget. Always good.
You know, there's a maintenance component of this as we go forward, maintaining the vegetation and so forth, but what it's also going to do is create a very nice vegetative park-like space in that area, although can't actively recreate in it, but still, it gives that quality rather than just a slab of concrete and a pump station. So it's nice.
Yeah. Councilmember Forsyth, thank you so much.
Thanks. Well, I'm not a member of the CFD, but I think I got to see this around the same time as Mr. Carson, prior to any planting and prior to even having any gravel. So it was just the pit and the spines, and it is definitely a very, very cool project. You mentioned that, you know, looking at other opportunities. How many other opportunities can you potentially see in the city to utilize this sort of runoff project? And do you think that they may all come in under budget because of the type of project this is with the planting and the stone?
One of the things that, you know, we do look at when we're needing to provide some aspect of stormwater treatment or stormwater control, right? Can we, and this is part of with the development process and our design standards, is do we go with a traditional vault, or can we look at, and these are more of the private components, you know, an aspect of bioswale facility or something along those lines? From a regional basis, I'm not for sure off the top of my head of what we're looking at, but that's definitely something, and not a regional basis, excuse me, citywide basis. That's something we can definitely take a look at and come back to council with some identification of future opportunities, because it's definitely the direction that we want to go, more of the natural treatment.
Great. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions from the council? How about any concerns for this item going to consent on the 16th of January? Wonderful. Well, we look forward to having it there and kicking off the new year, accepting this project. Thank you so much, Director Burt. Wonderful. Item number two on our agenda tonight is the Planning Commission recommendation of the Phase Two amendments to the Redmond zoning and municipal codes. And introducing the item, we have Director Carol Helen, Planning and Community Development. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Presiding Officer Stewart and councilmembers. It's good to see you this evening. Last council meeting of the year. Today, we're providing a brief introduction to the Redmond zoning code Phase Two rewrites, and those are minor amendments to the zoning and municipal codes. And we are really going to start digging into this work in January, but the package is kind of big. And I just wanted to explain, although it is large, it is shallow in content. So it's mostly related to changes that we need to make to ensure that the code is internally consistent, and Kim will talk to that a bit in a moment, and aligned with state law as well. So at your January 16th meeting, we'll present the Planning Commission's recommendation. We'll endeavor to have a member of the Planning Commission here also to help respond to any questions you may have. And then Kim Dietz is going to respond to any questions you may have and collect them in anticipation of both a staff report on January 16th and then a study session later in the month. So with that...
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. This series is a minor amendment package, and it's comprised of annual cleanups that we do to the code so that there's regular maintenance to keep the code functioning well. It's a living document. Also, improvements for accessibility as a public document to make sure that its formatting, organization, and transparency allow for readability for many of our customers. And then also, we have some responses from community interest. Beekeeping, for example, is one of those. And then finally, there are updates for conformance with state law, two in particular. One is related to daycare waivers. Another one is in terminology-only, changing from marijuana to cannabis to be consistent with state provisions. So your meeting schedule includes the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is attachment A to your package, and in that, you will see five discussion items in the Planning Commission's issue matrix. And I just wanted to point out that two of those were generated by community comments. Then you have amendments and summaries to the analyses. So when staff was developing the amendments, we provided a backstory as well as analysis, comparative studies in that information. And the format of the information was generated by working with the Planning Commission and city council for these series coming to you on an annual basis. So if there are any additional pieces of information you would like to be included in those studies, it would be great to hear those comments as well. That is in Attachment B to your packet. And then finally, the individual amendments. There are many places where you can find the amendments, but one thing we did is we organized them by code chapter and section number, so you can easily access those amendments in one. That's Attachment C. So we look forward to any questions that you have today for us. We'll collect those in preparation for the January 16th meeting. And then on January 16th, after spending some time with the package, you may have more questions, and we'll take those as well at that time in preparation for your January 30th study session.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for introducing this, first touch on this package. It's really helpful. Questions from the council to inform our next staff report on January the 16th? Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. So there's a couple of things, and I'll probably just drop a few right now and then email you with the rest of the questions that I have. But there's the issue of the sewer side repair by owner or by occupant. Will that technically mean that if someone is a renter, they could be potentially liable for or responsible for those repairs?
I will reach out to the author on that. That is a Public Works amendment, and so I'm happy to reach out and find out more.
It's page 21 for reference. And then there's a lot in there that says "dance hall," and I'm very interested to hear what the definition of dance hall is, because it feels very outdated potentially and a bit like Footloose. So I'm interested to hear what that means in our code.
Okay, thank you. We're happy to bring those back to you.
Okay, and I'll email the rest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Forsyth. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Kritzcher.
I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding in terms of what's being put before us. I think you had mentioned five key issues. I see eight that are really called out in the summaries. So am I looking at the wrong section? Where's the one that we should be looking for, the five key?
Oh, the five key issues are in the Planning Commission's issue matrix.
In the issue matrix?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, great. And I think in the summaries, that's calling out just additional pieces that are also proposed to be amended. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, well, with that, I think that gets us started. I will just acknowledge January 16th feels very far away, so if councilmembers are studying this issue over the break and would like to email questions to Director Helen to pass on to Kim, that is probably going to be a helpful thing as we continue to prepare for the 16th.
Yes, thank you very much. We appreciate receiving the questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy holidays. Thank you.
You also. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three on our agenda, the Southeast Redmond Master Plan update. This item is also ahead of our study session coming up in January. Our next conversation about this issue will be on January the 9th. So welcoming to the table here, we have Lorraine Hamilton, Director of Parks and Recreation. Welcome.
Good evening, council. I'm joined today by Caroline Chapman, our Park Planning Manager, to discuss with you the progress that we're making on the Southeast Redmond Park Master Plan. And so I'm going to hand it over to her to just share a little bit about our progress as well as let you know what you can expect at our study session early in January. We're going to jump right into it in the new year.
Yes, thank you. So I'm here just to do a quick process update, and there were three concepts that were developed for the Southeast Redmond Park Master Plan that were in your packet. These were developed by Berger Partnership, and they were also shared at a public meeting back in October and as part of an online questionnaire that was open from mid-October to mid-November. We went ahead and promoted that questionnaire across our city channels and direct outreach to community members who had attended the first two meetings that we had about this park development. And we had about 180 community members who responded to the questionnaire. When we had these three concepts developed, we were really looking at three distinct styles and designs to try and get the community's priorities around what they wanted to see in the future and really gauge interest on the types of amenities that they were looking for. And these three were really built off of the initial feedback that we heard at that first community meeting in September, as well as our site conditions and how it fits in with the rest of our parks and recreation system, and the kind of top-line guidance that we were getting out of the park plan that was just adopted. So these three concepts will be incorporated and have a refined concept based off of the feedback that we've received thus far, and that is going to be coming to council for a study session on January 9th. At that study session, we'll also review more in depth the community feedback that we've received to date. And staff and Berger at that time will be wanting to hear your feedback, suggestions, and priorities for the park so that we can incorporate those into a preferred final master plan. Berger is also going to be visiting our Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission in January, and we'll have a third and final community meeting, sharing similar feedback that, or similar information that you as council will be getting and asking for that feedback. Anticipate that we will bring a final master plan to council in March of 2024. And just for situational awareness, we'll also be creating a business case for this park's design and development to add to the CIP and to keep the momentum rolling on that project, so.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chapman and Director Hamilton. Really exciting to see. I'll go ahead and turn to my fellow councilmembers. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Kritzcher.
Thanks for all your work on this. This is fun to preview. I'm so excited for the discussion. Two requests for you. One would be, as part of the information we get for this discussion, if there's any quotes or other sort of information you have from those community gatherings that you could share of kind of some of the most common pieces of input. Obviously, I see so much of it in terms of how that got translated into design options, but it would be helpful to hear if you, I don't know if you gathered anything in their own words to hear directly from our community about that as we look at these different options. And then, secondly, if you're planning a third community meeting, whenever you set the date, can you just let us know as soon as possible? So hopefully, we can be available to do that listening. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Forsyth.
Well, I might be ahead of the game, because I have interests in particular directions, and so I'll just go ahead and state, I'm really loving the retro sign identity piece for the marker and the gateway for the entry point. And I'm interested to know, I didn't see cricket on any of the playfields, and that was kind of surprising to me, given the community in that area and the desire to have more cricket throughout the community. So if we could touch on that in the study session, I'd be interested to hear how that came about. And then I would just say, from the first blush, from my view, the wild seems like the best use of the space, and I look forward to digging in more and hearing more when we have the consultant available too.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Okay, I'll hop in just to say, since I did have a chance to attend the very first community meeting on this, I just continue to see all the many ways that the input was reflected, and I look forward to learning more from the consultant and by the time we meet with you all again in January about the process of making those really tough decisions, what's able to be accommodated for, and what might be something, some of the things that are going to be better fits in other projects. So really looking forward to continuing that conversation in January. Again, if the council, I'm acknowledging that there is a gap in time if you're studying this issue catching up over the holidays. I would hope that we would all send our questions to Director Hamilton ahead of the study session.
Great. And if I might add as well, something I can send on that might be helpful as you review this information in preparation for January is to look at the classifications of the various types of parks that we have within our system. So this one falls within our neighborhood park classification, which also helps determine the amenities that we will or will not build, because the goal is for it to serve that surrounding community. But it also becomes a balance between providing things that that immediate community will really enjoy, but then will also not necessarily create such a cool amenity that the entire community is going to try and drive over to see. So I think that that would be helpful. That's in our new park plan that was just adopted, so I can send that to council out as well and just identify what pages that's on, because I think that also is a great thing to kind of center in our minds as we approach that conversation in January as well. So it also just might get your juices flowing a little bit.
Absolutely. And you reminded me, Director Hamilton, of something that your opening remarks reminded me of is 2024, I'm just so excited to be in partnership with you all, because we are going to do great things like open brand-new buildings and wrap up this master planning process so that we can get it in the CIP and just keep the ball rolling. So I really appreciate the leadership and forethought of your team. Councilmember Kritzcher.
Definitely sending out that information would be helpful. I would also say, just because it is going to be a little while and we'll have some new councilmembers, if in the memo for that discussion, you could call out, you know, kind of what are the included uses and what are not, just in a brief little bullet points, I think that would also be helpful just for people to orient themselves, because they may not dig in on the previous emails. And one other thing I wanted to note, this item was called Southeast Redmond Master Plan, so if we can just make sure it's Park Master Plan, because originally, I was like, are we looking at the neighborhood? And then I opened it and thought, okay, it is the Park Master Plan, so. And then a last question that I'll just put out there is that I am interested, as we look at kind of the neighborhood identity or the branding options, it struck me how we balance choosing something like that with our city's general brand approach. Like, for me, I think the forest portal seems very Redmond in terms of our general brand identity. But so just curious, like, how we kind of gauge how far we want to go with setting any sort of new identity or themes?
I really appreciate your note as well about new councilmembers. We are including in that, like, originally, as we talked to the consultant, it was very much, they were going to come present this, you know, where we had landed and take input. But at the beginning of that presentation as well, Caroline is going to offer a couple slides of kind of centering us and giving some of that basic information, and then I will also set myself a reminder on my calendar that in the new year, when the new council members have started, to maybe also send on some of the information that we have sent you all to get them maybe up to speed, or at least provide information if they have the ability to review it. So I appreciate that note.
Wonderful. Thank you for the wonderful conversation. Councilmember Forsyth, I saw you lit up one more time. Did you have another comment?
I did, but Councilmember Kritzcher flagged the issue of just making sure that's in the memo, and then Director Hamilton followed up with it'll be in the presentation, so.
Awesome. Thanks, work team. Okay. Well, we look forward to coming back to this very exciting issue on our study session on January 9th. Thank you so much. I think we're going to have the same duo. Stick with us here for item number four, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Item number four is our Tree Canopy Strategic Plan update.
Yes, this is another item that our senior park, or our Park Planning Manager Caroline Chapman will present, the Tree Canopy Strategic Plan implementation. It goes across multiple departments, and Caroline has done a great job of working with those departments and the key stakeholders to look at how this is being implemented. And so she's just here to give a brief update to council and to take any questions that you might have.
Yes, and I should start off at the top and say, this is not a comprehensive review of what the city is doing around trees, but a segment of that work that was really identified in the Tree Canopy Strategic Plan that council adopted in 2019. And as Lorraine mentioned, this really is a cross-departmental effort, and so I'm just speaking on behalf of a number of colleagues who provided the information that's part of the update that you received. So first of all, for our overall tree canopy, we are still working towards our goal of 40% coverage. The most recent analysis that was done this past year shows that our canopy coverage is 37.5%, or about 4,000 total acres. This is a slight decrease of about 0.3%, which is in the margin of error, but would be around 36 acres lost in two years. Some good news is, along stream corridors, our total tree canopy coverage is at 56.5%. So while we have not yet met our goal of 40%, it was really anticipated in that strategic plan that we would first decrease our canopy before going back up. So this slight decline was anticipated. Secondly, the Tree Canopy Strategic Plan talks a lot about volunteer efforts and tree plantings, and in 2023, Public Works planted 1,655 trees on a little more than two and a half acres, and another 1,106 trees were planted in 2022 and '23 by volunteers with the Green Redmond Partnership. One thing to note is that Forterra is no longer offering its Green Cities program support, so the Green Redmond program has come back in-house and is being managed by staff in our Maintenance and Operations Division, and they are working on ways to really incorporate that effort into broader city volunteer efforts and streamline it and see how we can keep that project moving forward without the support from Forterra. We had additional trees that were planted under development mitigation requirements, and unfortunately, I do not have a count on that, but as part of our code. As for next steps, in 2024, we're really going to continue to advance the goals of this strategic plan, and some exciting and new information is coming in with our Climate Resilient and Sustainable Vegetation Management Plan. That's going to be completed in early 2024, and we're really looking forward to that because it's going to give staff resources on potential locations for tree canopy expansion on public lands, which is really the best opportunity that we have as a city to expand our canopy as city staff, I guess I should say. And we will also be looking at, or will receive updated suggested tree species lists. That's going to be really more adapted to our changing climate. So looking forward to having that. And Park Operations is also working on an evaluation inventory of the health of street trees and trees in the city right away. So any mitigation or improvement actions that come out of that will happen in 2024. And then finally, something that we're really excited about is looking, we've received some funding, about $200,000, that can go towards a tree giveaway program on private properties. And so this is a really wonderful opportunity for education with our community members and expansion of our tree canopy. And it's a new effort and has a lot of potential, so I'll be working with Jenny Liebeck, as well as some of her colleagues in Bellevue, who had a similar tree giveaway program on how we can implement that. So when that gets underway, we'll, of course, bring more updates to council. But I'd be happy to take questions. Again, I'm just kind of the mouthpiece for a number of people, so I might not necessarily have the answer, but I would be happy to find out for you and get back to you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ms. Chapman, for being here and walking us through some of these updates. I know that this is an important topic to the council, so we'll go ahead and open up for a few questions. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you so much for the presentation. So I-
So I was curious about the Forterra program coming in-house and if we're going to be realizing any cost savings for that. And then the follow-up to that would be if we could use any of those funds, if there are savings towards some of that private property tree giveaway or what some ideas might be that you have about how we could use those funds.
So the Forterra program was only about $50,000 a year. And so we are not anticipating there being any savings because we'll need to utilize that in-house for staffing support and things like that. Often, Forterra would have staff onsite to support these work parties and things like that. And that's things that we'll now need to support with either supplementals or overtime. And so at this point, we are not anticipating any cost savings. In fact, I would say we need to continue supporting that Green Redmond program. But in time, if we were to realize cost savings, we could definitely look at ways to either do tree giveaways or those other things. We really are trying to look at it comprehensively to understand what's the most effective way to do this program in-house. And so we are in a bit of a, like, a middle place with it as we bring it in-house because Forterra has been reducing their support. So it wasn't like all of us, like, sometimes those things are just like, oh, we no longer support this. It's actually been like, oh, we'll do this, but we're not doing this. And it's kind of been this slow fade. So we're still really figuring out exactly what that looks like. So we'll continue to keep you updated on what those resources, resource levels are and if there's any changes to them.
Thank you for that. And just clarification, the $50,000, was that a two-year or?
No, per year. It's $50,000 per year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Forsyth.
Thanks. I'm really excited to see that tree species list. I know that's something that we've on council been interested in, making sure that we're planting the right trees to replace. So very excited to see that. And then for the tree giveaway, I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but I'd be very interested to see us partnering with school districts on that. When I was a kid, they had tree giveaways for, I think it was Earth Day or maybe Arbor Day. And it's really cool when I go home to my parents' house and see these giant trees that I planted when I was in third grade and I brought them home on the school bus. So just a really memorable way to get kids involved. And, you know, nothing better than getting kids to nag their parents to plant a tree. So I think it could be a great opportunity.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kritzler.
Question and a comment. A question on the Green Redmond program. Are we going to be continuing with the Forest Stewards piece of that?
Yeah, the Forest Stewards, that support was one of the first things that they were unable to support, and we have continued that in-house. Meg Angivine, our Park Operations Supervisor, really manages that now. And our Forest Stewards are still hard at work in our, in our system.
Wonderful. Yeah, I know that's such a one, a great way to engage our community members. And yeah, I would just say, it would be great, maybe next year, as you're updating that program and getting the new vision for it. I know, actually, I think I spoke at Green Redmond Day this year with Meg a little bit about the program. But it would be so wonderful for you to come back to one of our committee meetings and just be able to dive a little more with us on what that looks like. Because I often get questions from the community about it. And I've gotten quite a few this year as people have gotten their notifications and are a little worried about it ending, even though it's not ending. So I think it'd be helpful for our council to know where we're going with it. I also think there's some great opportunities going into next year with our new volunteer coordinator position, to be able to hopefully engage more on this. I would say, I feel like the trend I've seen over the past many years with Green Redmond Day is that it's always sold out in terms of spots over a week ahead. So there's clearly a lot of demand. And if there's more need for actually people volunteering and we are going to be having some more volunteering management capacity coming onboard, it would be great to see these numbers even increase in terms of trees planted.
That's great. Yes, absolutely. We are planning to come in the new year to share a little bit more about how that program is changing. I think in the meantime, if you get those questions, the response really should be nothing, as far as the community can tell, really, nothing has changed. We continue to use the Cedar platform, which is the platform that we do volunteer management through Forterra with. And we are continuing to do the work parties and the Forest Stewards. So I would say, from an outward perspective, there really hasn't been many changes. And Caroline is working really closely with our Park Operations team, but also with our marketing and communications folks within our department to kind of widen that, as you're talking about the, really, people do want to be very involved. And so how do we, as a department, address that? And so we will absolutely come back and share that. But in the meantime, if anyone asks, as far as the community is concerned, nothing has really shifted from a service-level perspective for Green Redmond.
Great. Thank you so much. And then one last plug that I'll put in, which is an idea that I've raised a couple of times in the past when we've talked about trees, that I just wanted to resurface as we're thinking about this. And especially thinking about ways to generate funding to get more trees in the ground, is that I've, community members have brought up the idea to me several times that it'd be great if there was a way for someone to donate, to have a tree planted in Redmond. I think we could even use a site kind of mechanism similar to what we did with the solar panels on top of the senior community center. But for people to be able to donate, to have someone's, you know, a tree planted in honor of those folks, that'd be, I think, a cool way to get a little revenue for this work, as well as for the community to feel invested. Some people have even suggested if we have a spot in the city where we think we need more trees, that we could have a grove or something to honor those in our community. So just wanted to bring that idea up again.
I love that idea. And I think that that's a great thing for us. As Caroline shared, we're working on the sustainability and climate resiliency and vegetation management. And part of that, they actually just had a workshop to start mapping where we could maybe do some reforestation efforts within our park system in particular. And so I think in the past, that has maybe felt difficult because we didn't have those spaces identified. But we're working now to identify those so that we can have these types of things. So I love that you brought it back up because I actually don't necessarily recall hearing it a lot. Just because I think I'm relatively new still in my position. But yes, I love that and definitely noted.
Wonderful. Thank you. And actually, I thought of one last thing as I'm speaking of different funding sources we could use to get even more trees in Redmond. Just to note that there's a new state program that's going to be rolling out around supporting stewardship in riparian zones and maybe able to support more riparian plantings we'd want to do along our waterways in Redmond. So just something for us to think about if we have any sort of ambitious project ideas along our waterways, that that might be another good source for us to look at as you're doing that planning.
Absolutely. And then I do just want to note, my staff just pinged me on the side. We actually do have a tree donation program. It's part of our donating park furnishings. So people do benches and picnic tables sometimes. There is actually the option to do a tree as well. And so maybe the improvement is also on our storytelling around that. And I still duly noted, but we do actually have that opportunity already. So I'm happy to send that link out to you all if that would be helpful.
Sorry. Can I, what was the name of where the stewardship?
Through the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, they're going to have a new, in 2024, they're going to be having a first grant round for riparian projects.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
Well, I was just thinking about, so we removed a tree not long, a couple of years ago. And we've replaced it with two trees. And I always wanted fruit trees, so. But, and this has been brought up, I know, from time to time. Somehow, either at Derby Days or one of those kinds of events, having, having an arborist that can recommend to our, and maybe we've done this in the past, but I don't remember it recently. You know, being able to consult with a professional on, okay, this is what I've got. Maybe bring pictures, encourage people to, maybe you do it through, you know, on social media. You, you kind of build it up in lead-up to the event. But the idea is that, you know, get a good recommendation because trees in the wrong place are not sustainable. In other words, they ruin, they ruin the sidewalk or they cause other problems. And so the right tree in the right place is what I know that Parks, as an organization, believes in. And so maybe it's a, it's a way for us to encourage residents to do this kind of thing, you know, for the long term. Because, I mean, I'm going to have, these things, I'm, it's been three years since I planted them. And basically, I haven't had to do anything to them. But, you know, they're actually up to the six-foot fence that, you know, I mean, they were little saplings. And it's like, it's amazing how quickly, all of a sudden, you have full-fledged trees. And so anyway, I'm just, I'm just thinking of a way that we can encourage residents that have maybe spaces that they want to use, but they don't know what to put there, they're concerned about it getting into their eaves or whatever. So to me, that would be terrific to see something like that. And that would support these goals.
Like an All About Trees booth kind of thing.
Oh, yeah.
We have that, we definitely have staff who love talking about trees. So I love that suggestion and we'll pass it along.
Okay. And maybe even be able to buy them. Work with a nursery. Thank you.
That's lovely. Thank you so much. I had a similar vein of comments, really, just by way of direction on, on the tree giveaway for residential. Obviously, giving away trees for residential properties is limited to a certain number of regions in our city. And so getting those trees planted in the right place is really important so that they can do the most good. By way of encouragement of existing, you know, assets and resources, I had the chance to participate in the Arbor Day planting this past year at, excuse me, Grass Lawn. And not only was the arborist who led that activity super smart and like, I learned so much, he was great with kids who were there, the Girl Scouts who were there to participate and help. And I think if those, if those offerings, those tree giveaways were even like located in the neighborhood parks near the places where we wanted them to be built and folks could come, you know, to have that resource in their park and have a chance to learn and ask questions and, oh, I forgot, let me go run home and take a picture or whatever. I think there's lots of opportunities to make sure we're making the most of it. But I very much appreciate your work on that. Caroline, I wanted to ask you one more question. We have been waiting for an update on some regional news related to trees. Is there anything you would like to share today? No is a perfectly acceptable answer.
I will leave that to Carol Helen and her team. I'm assuming you're talking about the GMPC and Master Builders?
The, if there was an update about, about the neighborhoods. It sounds like you're not prepared to give us an update.
I am not. And sorry, Carol, to put you on the spot.
We do not have an update today is a perfectly acceptable answer.
Good evening again. We actually did hear in our joint meeting with the Master Builders at our November meeting that the Master Builders in the City of Kirkland have reached a settlement with regard to the tree ordinance that was appealed to the Growth Management Hearings Board. And I believe they may be presenting that to their council next week. We are following the issue with their council and will report back on any changes that we think are necessary to our code to move that forward next year, probably Q1.
Okay, great. We'll look forward to that again next, next year. Okay. Thank you so much. Any final questions for the team? Thank you so much. We have now concluded our agenda. And with that, I will just take a personal point of privilege to thank everyone for an awesome term. This is our last committee of the whole, for the term. Committee of the Whole will not take place in the first week of January, but they will be back on January the 9th. And we will be celebrating our outgoing and incoming council members later tonight at 7:00. So if you're interested in that, please come down to City Hall and join us. Thank you so much. We're adjourned.